All right, welcome everyone to the Lincoln City Council meeting of February 5th, 2024. In accordance with LBA, excuse me, 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, we will observe a short moment of silent meditation.
That means they stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify himself or herself, including an address and the name of any organization represented by such person unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Anyone wishing to speak on an item on the agenda should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business is a reminder that due to President's Day holiday, city council will not meet on Monday, February 19th, 2024. Also, to help guide public testimony today, we do utilize both podiums here on the right and left in that the clerks will use a timing system here with the monitors showing red, excuse me, green light will indicate that your time will start, yellow light will indicate you have four, you're at four minutes, and the red light will indicate that you're at your five-minute timeframe. Next on our agenda will be our consent agenda, sections one, two, and three.
Is there anyone here to speak on anything on the consent agenda items one, two, or Director, welcome.
Good afternoon. Maggie Stokie Ross, Parks and Recreation. I'm here to speak on behalf of item 1A, which is the appointment of Dr. J.J. Tocheck, that's how you say his name, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Dr. Tocheck is the Director of Athletics and Activities for Lincoln Public Schools. The Parks Board has a longstanding tradition of having a representative from LPS on our board. We do so much together, collaborate together, joint facilities and the like. Unfortunately, you couldn't be here today, but I spoke with the chair and we'd like to move forward with his nomination for Parks Board.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Director?
Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on any item on the consent agenda? Those are items listed under one, two, and three on today's agenda. Okay, see none. Madam Clerk, please move us on.
We can vote on the items. Item 1A is appointing Dr. J.J. Tocheck to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term to expire April 27th, 2025, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second. Carlson, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 1B is to clarify the prior appointment of Kim Morrow to the District Energy Corporation for a partial term to expire December 31st, 2023, and reappointment of Kim Morrow to the District Energy Corporation for a term to expire December 31st of 2025, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second. Carlson, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 1C is to clarify the prior appointment of Ryan Kelly to the Commission on Human Rights for a partial term to expire December 31st, 2023, and reappointment of Ryan Kelly to the Commission on Human Rights for a term to expire December 31st of 2026, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second. Carlson, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 1D is to clarify the prior appointment of Sarah Walker to the Commission on Human Rights for a partial term to expire December 31st, 2023, and reappointment of Sarah Walker to the Commission on Human Rights for a term to expire December 31st of 2026, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second. Carlson, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 1E is appointing Eileen Burt to the Nebraska Capital Environment Commission for a term to expire January 9th, 2026, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second. Carlson, discussion. Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 1F is approving the distribution of funds representing interest earnings on short-term investments of idle funds during the month ended December 31st of 2023, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second. Carlson, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall move on to section four, public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll call items 4A and 4B together. Item 4A, application of Latens Pub LLC doing business as Latens Pub for a Class C liquor license located at 4630 Laton Avenue, Suites 10, 15, 20, and 25, and the related manager application of Gabriel M. Sullivan.
Hello, welcome.
Hi, thank you, council members. My name is Lauren Kitner. Spelling I did on the sign-in and the address is 222 South 15th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Here today representing Latens Pub LLC and manager applicant, Gabe Sullivan, Gabriel Sullivan. Thank you. The brief history on this is that Lincoln's Pub operated since February of 2022 at about 46th and Laton Avenue. This is the same place. There was just a switch and alternation in ownership that forces to reapply formally for the application, and so it's there. And we rebranded. The owners also wanted a brand closer to a neighborhood feel and community feel, so it went from a theme of presidents, former presidents' names to more community neighborhood names. So this is Latens Pub, and they're opening, have opened a second restaurant in La Vista, working with that mayor and city council, and so that's in their city center there, new development still going on, and that's called the City Pub for the city center. So that's the theme now is naming them for the communities there. But I'm happy to answer any questions. Do you have any of the manager of the business?
Thank you very much for coming forward. Really, really appreciate it. Any questions for this applicant?
No.
No?
I didn't.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on items 4A and 4B, the related applications of Latens Pub? Anyone else here for 4A or 4B? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and move forward.
I'll call items 4C, 4D, and 4E together. Item 4C is application of 48 Bowl Inc., doing business as Hollywood Bowl for a Class C liquor license located at 920 North 48th Street. 4D is application of 48 Bowl Inc., doing business as Parkway Lanes for a Class C liquor license located at 2555 South 48th Street, and the related manager application of Lloyd R. Blessington.
Hello, welcome.
Good afternoon. Lloyd Blessington, 10040 Fletcher Avenue in Lincoln, the owner and the manager of Hollywood Bowl and Parkway Lanes. Moved here in 96 in small town Iowa, been working at the Bowls ever since. Captain Delta Airlines, been in the Nebraska Guard for 23 and a half years, so essentially the business is not going to change, just changed ownership.
Okay, very good. Counselors, any questions?
You know, I started to have a question. I noticed how busy you were, and so I think that answered the question I was going to ask about your taking the training in a month instead of tomorrow. But you're busy.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions, counselors? Okay, very good. Thanks for coming down.
Right, thank you.
We appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on items 4C, 4D, and 4E? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to 4F and 4G.
Item 4F is application of DBLJ Ideas LLC doing business as the Highball Bar Lincoln for a Class C liquor license located at 122 North 11th Street, Suite 100B, and the related manager application of Jason M. Ortmeier.
Hello, welcome.
Hello. Jason Ortmeier, 3401 North 74th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68507, here for Double J Ideas with the Highball Bar Lincoln. It's the old Happy Raven on right about 10th, 11th, and O. Kind of redid, we spent, spent the last few months redoing the inside, making it more of a neighborhood-friendly lounge for all the upcoming condos and stuff that are coming in that area and trying to brand toward that kind of demographic.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for coming down. We appreciate it very much. When do you anticipate opening?
We anticipate opening within the next month or so.
Okay, very good. Counselors, questions?
I don't, thank you.
Okay, very good. It'll be nice to have that space open and alive again. Thank you for coming down.
Look for scenes, I'm yeah.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, or I'm sorry, is there anyone else here who would like to speak on items 4F and 4G? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to 4H and 4I.
Item 4H is application of Decant LLC doing business as Bin 105 for a Class C K liquor license located at 105 North 8th Street, Suite 100, and the related manager application of Caitlin M. Kunsman.
Hello, welcome. Are you Caitlin?
Hi, I'm Caitlin Kunsman, 2609 Woodsdale Boulevard. At the beginning of the year, Decant LLC purchased Bin 105. It's been on, in operation for almost 15 years. We plan to keep the establishment pretty much the same with some minor changes to the inside, make it more of a loungy space, and opening up a few more, few new services. But otherwise, it's pretty much going to stay the same.
Okay, very good. Well, thanks for coming down. We appreciate that. Counselors, questions?
Will you remain open while you're making these changes?
The, we are currently open under a temporary operating permit, and those changes, new furniture and some paint, so it may be closed for a few days, but otherwise, we'll remain open.
Good luck.
Anyone else? Okay, very good. Thanks for coming down. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on items 4H and 4I? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to 4J and 4K.
Item 4J is application of SJ's Liquor and Vape LLC doing business as SJ's Liquor and Vape for a Class D liquor license located at 2645 O Street, and the related manager application of Ali Kay Sadeer.
Hello, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Timing's perfect.
My name is Taryn Nick. I'm an associate attorney at Glass Law. We were just notified recently that this matter was on the agenda today. Given that we did not receive notice in time, Mr. Glass, the counsel for this matter, is in Sarpy County in court, so my request today is if we would be able to table this matter to the next city council hearing, so Nicholas Glass could be present.
We may consider that, however, let me see if we have any questions at all. I don't know that we have any, so let me see first. I wouldn't want to delay you if it weren't necessary.
Certainly, I appreciate that.
So, counselors, do we have questions that the applicant or the applicant's representative may be, be able to answer today?
I have one question, but...
Shall we give it a shot?
Let's give it a shot.
Or would you prefer a delay?
Well, Sadeer may be able to answer in my place. I'm just simply not the attorney.
Sure, understood.
Dealing with this, and so I'm here on his...
Hello, welcome. Do you want to give us your name and address, sir?
My name is Sadeer Ali. The address is 5844 Fremont Street. I'm the owner and manager of SJ's Liquor and Vape here on 27th and O Street.
Thank you for coming down. We appreciate it. Counselor?
Would you describe your business model and how that works, please? I don't, I'm not very familiar with...
Yes, right now, so what we have right now is a, it's a tobacco shop. We currently cannot sell alcohol, but however, we do have a walk-in cooler installed, and we have plenty of space to sell alcohol out of it, and we just wanted to have the opportunity to do that for the community.
And will you allow folks to drink the alcohol on premises, or is it all off premise?
Everything's going to be off premises.
Do we have other questions? Yes, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for coming forward. There's, we do do, you know, you consulted with our investigator with the police department, and he provides us with some information. We've had some issues with traffic violations in the past. That concerns us a little bit. Could you explain, give us an overview of what happened and how you feel about it and what the future looks like?
Yes, in the past, I did make some mistakes with my driving record, but right now, I have obviously grow out of that. For the past year, I haven't been driving. I've been getting rides everywhere, and whether it's Uber or however it is, I've been following the law and making sure the law comes first. Yes, I did make some mistakes in the past, but I have grown, and I have, since then, I haven't had any trouble with the law.
And it looks like that you are required to attend a show cause hearing going forward.
Would you elaborate on that a little bit? Are you familiar with the show cause hearing?
No, I'm not.
Maybe we should have Inspector Parker explain this. Investigator Parker. And I probably should turn my microphone on, too. That would help.
Could you?
That would be great.
Stupid showbie.
Investigator Parker, welcome.
Hello, Investigator Scott Parker, Lincoln Police Department, 575 South 10th Street.
Best way to Parker, thanks for coming forward. We were having a conversation about the show cause hearing. Could you explain a little bit more to me and the rest of the council what that means?
Sure. So the specific show cause hearing in question for SJ's is going to be based off of points, and those points are assessed based off of number of convictions, timelines, so on and so forth. So what will happen is he will go before the liquor commissioners, talk about plans moving forward to make sure everything is good, we're operating within the law, so on and so forth. At times, they will put stipulations on the license, so like no liquor license violations for a year, everything like that. So it's kind of a, you know, a double check to make sure that he's successful in his business, which obviously we all want.
Yes.
And to ensure that everything is happening safely and within the confines of the law.
So as a follow-up, if we approve this application today, the show cause hearing would still happen?
Yes.
And it would be in the hands of the state liquor commission on whether to approve or deny?
Yes, correct. Yes. And/or place any other conditions? Conditions, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. That's what I want.
Very good. Any other questions at all? Okay, very good.
Kind of wondering, why don't we go forward then? Based on that?
Okay.
We're all thinking the same thing.
Yep.
No delay, just to prove.
Thank you so much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming down. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on agenda items 4J and 4K? Anyone else here for 4J and 4K?
Mr. Chair, seeing no one else coming forward to talk about items 4A through 4K, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Second, Washington, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. That concludes section four of our agenda. We shall move on to section five, public hearing ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. Item 5A is annexation 23013, application of Planning Department to annex 157.62 acres on property generally located at North 84th Street and Havlock Ave.
Steve Hendrickson with Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. This is an application that we started. We do have on the overhead here the boundaries of the application. It's all property that is owned by ADM. That is pretty much completely surrounded by the city limits, except on the east side of 84th Street. Actually, as you drive along 84th Street from O to Cornhusker, you're inside the city limits, except for this little teeny spot here. So we just thought partly, as we review annexations of the city limits boundaries in the course of the year, this is a spot where it really didn't make much sense. Water and sewer is available. We did contact ADM. We ended up being sent to their legal counsel, who had some questions for us, mostly asked if we were changing the zoning. We're not. This is just basically including the property in the city limits. ADM would be available still to change the zoning if they think that's appropriate in the future, but the current use of the property is just farmland adjacent to the south of ADM.
And it looks like that ADM's weight facility and what have you to the north is already annexed.
Yes, actually, ADM is already in the city limits, and a couple of years ago, we annexed the Piedmontes facility, which has been growing on the east side of it. The property to the south and to the west has been in the city limits for a number of decades.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, Steve. What questions do we have for Steve? Anything from anyone? Yes, sir.
Sorry to belabor this, Mr. Chair, but Mr. Chair, thanks for coming forward. Usually, we have annexations for two reasons. The property owner wants to be annexed, or the city's doing a cleanup action, and this is the second of those, right? Correct. This is just something that actually could have been annexed a number of years ago. We've had some inquiries for development out in this area, and we just thought it was appropriate to move forward with the annexation at this time. That was my main question. Why do we do annexations? One of two reasons.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 5A? Anyone else here for item 5A? All right, let's go ahead and move on to 5B.
Item 5B is text amendment 23017, application of Yankee Hill Landscaping Inc. to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Section 27.63.110, garden center to adjust the front yard setback in the AG and AGR zoning districts from 100 feet to 50 feet.
Mike, welcome.
Good afternoon. Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group here today on behalf of Yankee Hill Landscapes, Inc. This is another kind of a text amendment that I would describe as sometimes you don't realize it's out there and is different than the other standards in the AG and AGR zoning. And so when the garden centers were established, they established a 100-foot setback in the front yard. All other uses in the AG and AGR are 50-foot. And so we worked with staff in a particular application for the McGee family who's here today. When we went to amend their special permit, it was discovered that their scale was in the front yard setback, and it is keeping us from amending that special permit and doing lots of other things. And so staff felt it was appropriate, you know, on the, even if no right-of-way's been given, there's the statutory 33-foot each side of center line, 66-foot of right-of-way. In their situation, it's actually 100-foot of right-of-way, 50 each way. And so the front yard setbacks are used to kind of establish that buffer for perhaps a residential house on the other side of the street. So they would have a 50-foot setback, and in this case, 100-foot, and then we'd have 50-foot before a scale or another structure should go in. So I appreciate Steve Hendrickson and the Planning Department working with us and realizing that there wasn't really any rhyme or reason why garden centers were set at 100-foot front yard setback back in the day, and so we would amend that to be 50-foot. There's only a handful of them out there in that AG and AGR zoning. So with their support and with the planning commission's support, we'd ask for yours as well. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike?
I'm familiar with the other location. That has the scale in that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a, it's a cleanup that'll provide, prevent some undue hardships, so...
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 5B? Text amendment 23017. Anyone here for item 5B? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to 5C.
Item 5C is change of zone 23075, application of Manzito, Inc. to change the zone from R3 Residential to O3 Office Park for property generally located at 4420 Lucille Drive.
Danae, welcome.
Good afternoon, members of the city council. Danae Kalkowski appearing today on behalf of Manzito, Inc., the applicant. So the items we have, or we have one item before you today, which is just the change of zone for about .7 acres. This property is located south of Pioneers and kind of east of Lucille Drive. So you have the AMI, big AMI facility here, and then you have the Preserve and Antelope Creek Commercial Development. So you've got B2 zoning here, O3 zoning, O3 zoning down here... So, you've got B2 zoning here, O3 zoning, O3 zoning down here. And we're requesting a change of zone to O3 on this area. This parcel is the site of the old Nebraska nurseries. And so, Nebraska nurseries existed there under the R3 zone as a special permit. So, there were certain conditions on being able to have the Nebraska nursery site there. They've since moved out, and so now, we're trying to convert it into more office space. So, I want to maybe just give it just a little bit more context. So, in the, have the area of the change of zone just outlined there in blue. But in conjunction with the change of zone, we also asked for an amendment to the special permit to add this .7 acres to the use permit for the Preserve to the north. As part of that, we're keeping the same building footprint that Nebraska nurseries had. All of the conditions under that special permit that talked about landscaping and screening, we just incorporated those same conditions over into the use permit. So, from the neighbors' perspective, it's going to look, smell, you know, very similar. We also are adding some screening along that parking over there just for a little bit of extra screening for the neighbors. This is a project that we've worked directly with the neighbors on, met with the specific neighbors adjacent, and then the Preserve Homeowners Association. We do have a little private agreement with them to restrict even a couple more uses on it that'll just be handled privately. But at this point, we have no opposition from that neighborhood group. Both the change of zone and the use permit were on consent agenda at the Planning Commission, and we didn't have anybody appear to testify. So, today, we're just asking for your approval of the change of zone. And then, we would move forward with both the special permit, or excuse me, the use permit and the change of zone.
Right, very good.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Questions for Danae?
Would you mind putting the?
My picture back up?
Yes, that last picture. Thank you very much. I was curious, in the change of zone from a special permit under its current R3?
Right.
To Office 3, what are the likely changes in use? So, I know it's going from, you know, yes, you can have a garden center in R3. And it was, you know, neat and tidy, and I think the neighbors were okay with it. But moving to Office Park, tell me a little bit about what could happen.
So, the Office Park will allow some of those same residential uses, right? So, they could go ahead and turn this back into single-family lots. They could do any of the, any of the R-type uses. Could be, you know, could be a small multifamily dwelling. With that 4,000-square foot footprint, we're pretty limited to what you could do. But could be assisted living facility. But the O3 opens up a few other options, primarily office, whether that's medical office or just regular office. And that's the primary use that we're trying to get here. Our initial conversations with the neighbors were to go to B2, which would be similar to, you know, the rest of the use permit. But then, that opens up a lot of retail uses and other businesses, and they weren't comfortable with the potential intensity of some of those uses. So, we backed it back down to the O3, which is a little bit more, you know, a transitory use and not quite as intensive. And then, even in there, there were a few uses, and I didn't bring my agreement with them, but there were even there, there were a few uses that we said, no, we won't do that. We won't do that. So, primarily opens up the office, keeps the residential uses allowed, but opens up that office opportunity for this site.
And regardless if you move to residential or office, you're going to add additional screening there on the northeast?
Yeah, right now, that's, it's actually there. I mean, because they had it in place with the garden center. So, there's a little bit of touch-up we've got to do, but there's already that buffer and landscape screening through there. We're adding the fence and then just beefing up a few places where the landscape screening needs a little bit of extra work. But we're just really kind of maintaining what they're used to seeing there as far as screening and look and size of building.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Danae? Yes, Tom?
I'm familiar with that. And that doesn't really face the front of any of the townhouses there.
No, no. And in fact, one of the conditions is that, you know, no access to either of those streets that go to the neighborhood. So, the access comes back into the north through the commercial development, and that will remain the same.
Yep, yep. I'm familiar with the people that live there, so.
Yep.
Other questions? Okay, seen none.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danae. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to this item? This is item 5C. Change, please come on down. Change of Zone 23075. Welcome.
Hi, guys. South Sauk Creek Area Neighborhood Association Founder, Terry Pope Gonzalez. I'm going to warm up glasses today, so I can see all of you. Our neighborhood was in part of some zoning. As a matter of fact, it was supposed to be a temporary batch plant 23 years ago. So, the first person who screwed us over was on the Lincoln City Council. Her name was Johnson. So, I've been doing this for a long time. Now, what's happened is, not to say it's going to happen to them, but when you do income-based leadership, okay? And that's what I'm going to call it, income-based leadership. We didn't have the money for a fancy attorney. So, now, the, and Sandra Washington has been to my house, and I really appreciate that. And she helped me with the kitty. I ended up with all these feral cats. Ain't that something? Like, I don't have enough problems. Anyway, so now, our property is supposed to be in the historic district of the South Bottoms, except now, because we were lied to by leadership. Okay, now, I realize that was 23 years ago, and I don't see any face that's on the city council from 23 years ago. We are now a full-time construction site. Can you imagine that? And I'm zoned residential. So, any zoning act that the city council has ever done in my area has what? Screwed us over. Now, the concrete batch plant, it is so toxic, it eats the paint off our house. It eats the paint, even if you're visiting, it eats the paint off your car. We've had to breathe this for how many years? Now, we can't get any relief because we don't have the money for a fancy attorney. So, to me, that's called income-based leadership. Has to be, right? Because if I had all the money in the world, guess what? That concrete batch plant, temporary 23 years ago, would not be there. And neither would the other companies that are now business areas, because we went ahead, Carl Eskridge was the person that time. See, we've never had good city council. We never have. And for whatever reason, so, now, listen. Now, Manzito's is going to do what Manzito's is going to do. We all know that, because they have the fancy attorney. But what I'm saying is if you don't pay attention and you don't follow through on what you agree on, guess what? How many city councils ago put it in my area? 23 years ago. And we are still fighting with it. I have a veteran in distress now, thanks to Lincoln, Nebraska. So, I don't really, so I don't like to come up here. But I want to say thank you for the fire people. Because there's a lot of discrimination in this town, and I am not a crybaby. So, I do not like to be up here in front of you people. But like I said, if you do not follow through with the oversight, maybe these people in the townhouses end up with something good. Maybe they don't. Depending on how Manzito is. We ended up with pieces shit people. But that's not a cuss word. My uncle said that's not a cuss word. So, how much more time I got? Shh. Because I'm going to stand here, and we're going to talk about this. Because this has been in my area for 23 years, and we cannot get any help. And now, I have a veteran in distress, and we could not get any help. So, I'm going to stand here, if I have to stand here, and just make noises. Because Manzito did what? He took away the Indians' sweat lodges, not giving a damn about them. So, what makes anybody think, what makes anybody think he's going to care about those townhomes? Hmm? He didn't care about the sweat lodges. That's over here by, how you say your name? Beckyus. Because he has a husband, because I told him I have a husband too, so I have sympathy for you, because you have a husband, okay? Listen, now, my husband is one of you. He graduated Lincoln High, 1971. He had a 49-year career as a journeyman ironworker. He was building Stratcom Strategic Air Command at Offutt Air Force Base before the COVID. So, if anybody thinks they're getting my property, not on a dead bet. Mr. Joe Gonzalez bought it when he was in World War II, 1945. Now, the city of Lincoln can only go back to 1947. So, I want here, because I'm not going to wait until I can have open mic, I'm just not. We're going to talk about this zoning stuff, okay? Because when you do income-based leadership, that's what you get. Now, I am not a crybaby in any way, shape, or form. And actually, you all know that, because you know me to come up here and be mean. I am mean. I do not like people. I own Gambino Stables. Does that say five minutes? Then I'm done.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 5C? Okay, seen none, let's go ahead and move on.
I'll call item 5D. Text Amendment 23016, Request of the City of Lincoln Planning Department to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Section 27.60.060, Plan Unit Development. Amendment Sections 27.62.150, Manufacturing, Processing, Storage, and Distribution Use Corp. Section 27.63.050, Parking Regulations. Section 27.63.470, Plan Service Commercial. Section 27.63.650, Mail Order Catalog Sales. 02, O3 and B2 Districts. Section 27.64.010, Procedures and Requirements. Section 27.67.040, Parking Requirements, Special Conditions. Section 27.67.045, Modifications to Parking Requirements. By repealing Section 27.67.066, Special Conditions. H3 Zoning Districts and by amending Figure 27.67.020, Parking Matrix and Figure 27.67.040, Uses with Special Parking Requirements to update Lincoln's Commercial Parking Regulations as envisioned in Policy 11 of Plan Forward 2050 at the Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan by eliminating minimum parking requirements in certain zoning districts.
All, Andrew, welcome.
Good afternoon, Council. Paul Barnes, I'm the manager of Long Range Planning. And with me is Andrea Thurlf, who's a planner in Long Range as well. And we do have somewhat of a brief presentation we'll give to you. First of all, I'd like to go ahead and thank Council Chair Beckyus for bringing this item forward. He has been leading this effort and talking to a lot of folks and groups out in the community, which benefits the process and also helps take some of that lift off of staff. So, we're very appreciative of that. So, I do have some slides up here we're going to go through. Yeah, so essentially, what we're doing is looking at modernizing Lincoln's commercial parking. The proposal is to eliminate vehicle parking minimums for most of the commercial and industrial zoning districts across the city. We will be looking at, with this proposal, though, maintaining existing minimum parking requirements for those residential districts, all of the R districts, and commercial districts that are typically found in close proximity to residential areas or in neighborhoods. We can get into that in a second. So, yeah, what are the goals with this project? Well, we're looking at hoping to promote economic development by allowing that enhanced flexibility of a site design and layout, and then associated with that, potential cost savings when looking at the cost for individual off-street parking spaces. Also, looking to allow for more market-driven parking decisions by looking at the commercial and industrial users and those that are in the market to make the decision for their parking needs. This third bullet here is to support the Climate Action Plan goals, which there's a lot of them in the community. But specifically with this, over time, we're looking at a reduction in the heat island effect and stormwater runoff as less parking lots are developed or needed or occupied by other uses. We're also looking at continuing to encourage redevelopment with this action of vacant or underutilized sites across the city. The Comprehensive Plan, known as Plan Forward 2050, does have a goal of 12,000 infill units by the year 2050. Just a side note, as of the adoption of the comp plan, we're around 2,000 infill units. So, we'd like to continue that and maybe increase that. Also, looking at removing barriers to allow for more compact development, you know, keeping the use of our land and our infrastructure more efficiently over the long term. And then, also continuing to support parking requirements, again, near those residential areas. So, this is the specific policy that comes from the Plan Forward, or City-County Comprehensive Plan, which directed us to look at eliminating and reducing minimum parking requirements in zoning districts, basically outside of downtown. In the B4 and the O1 zoning districts, which are in downtown Lincoln, there are no parking requirements. So, we were looking to expand that across the city. We also did research for other communities and found that there's a wide number of cities, some bigger, some smaller, that have already done this. We did talk with a lot of them and found that, you know, it's really an incremental approach over time that they're looking at seeing that by removing these parking requirements, it's not going to be an overnight kind of impact. But that as properties continue to develop or redevelop, you will see those kind of impacts happen with the reduction of requirements. And I'll turn it over to Andrew.
So, I'm going to walk through some of the details of the proposal. The first, probably the biggest chunk, is that we'd be eliminating parking for all of our use permit districts. So, that's B2, B5. Those are kind of our commercial districts. B5 would be our regional centers like Gateway, South Point, those types of places. O3, Office. I3 is kind of a light industrial district. And then, RT is our residential transition, kind of small-scale neighborhood commercial district. For all of those districts, if you want to develop, you have to have an approved use permit. So, you have to submit a site plan with parking and building envelopes, all of those things. So, part of this proposal, you would not have to show parking on the use permit anymore. You could show a conceptual lot just for design purposes, but you don't have to say, well, we're required to have 25 stalls, so here are the 25 stalls. Other districts that would be part of this proposal, all of our H and I districts. So, our H districts are like our highway commercial, heavier commercial a little bit. And then, our I districts are our industrial districts. So, all of those districts would have parking removed, parking requirements removed. We also have a couple special development types or zoning types. One is planned unit developments. So, essentially, a planned unit development, a PUD, is an overlay on a zoning district. Technically, PUDs don't really have parking minimums inherently, but typically, when a PUD is approved, say, we start with like a B3. For this case, we'll say a B2 base district, and the PUD says parking is per B2. So, most, if not all of our PUDs, do reference some sort of parking standard. So, with this change, any PUDs approved prior to this adoption date would have their parking removed. In the future, if a developer wanted to have parking in their PUD, they still could, but it wouldn't be required. And then, the other piece is special permits. So, we have a lot of different special permits related to different zoning districts, but many of those just show parking on them as a requirement of the special permit. So, maybe there'd be a special permit approved 10 years ago in the H2 district, and it would be showing 30 stalls, because at the time, that's what was required. So, with this proposal, we'd get rid of parking requirements for previously approved special permits, because really, those aren't meant to add extra parking. They were just showing the parking that was required at the time. And there are several districts that are maintaining parking requirements. So, our residential districts, R1 through R8, not touching that with parking. We also have some of our more, I guess you could say, neighborhood-scale commercial and office districts, B1, B3, O2. Those office districts and commercial districts are typically in neighborhoods. So, right now, they're not part of the parking proposal, just because we don't want to create a situation where we're having overflow parking into neighborhoods. This map, which is, was also a part of your packet, so it might be easier for you to see rather than on here. But this is showing kind of the boundaries and scope of this proposal. So, the yellow, light yellow area is our residential and public zoning district. So, those are not being impacted by this. The green areas are commercial districts that previously had minimum parking requirements. With this proposal, they would no longer have minimum parking requirements. So, you can see it's most of our commercial districts. And then, black is downtown, which today doesn't have minimum parking requirements. And then, the small red dots that you can see, those are our commercial districts that are maintaining parking requirements. So, you can see for the most part on that map, those small red dots are small, you know, two or three-site commercial areas that are essentially within neighborhoods. So, those are keeping their parking right now. So, what are our expected results? As Paul mentioned, we did talk to several other communities, communities that are pretty similar to us. Midwestern have a major university, generally similar size to Lincoln. Midwestern have a major university, generally similar size to Lincoln. So, Lincoln today, like those communities, is a car-focused environment. So, we expect that most businesses will continue to provide onsite parking for employees and customers. It just, it makes a viable commercial site. You need to have parking. Some sites with limited parking ability may be redeveloped. And then some new sites may just have incrementally fewer parking stalls. So, for example, a new development site, maybe they would have been required to have 80 parking stalls, but without the requirement, maybe they think they only need 70. So, that's what we're looking at, is these small incremental changes. It will also help support redeveloping commercial pad sites, areas in front of big-box stores, some of our larger commercial centers that have huge parking lots that we know are never full. Those parking stalls are there because they're required to be there because of zoning. So, getting rid of this requirement could help have some redevelopment in some of those parking lots. The biggest impact will be long-term. So, as I mentioned, it'll be incremental, year by year, maybe a few dozen less parking spaces than one of otherwise been required citywide. But as we look out over years and decades, we're talking hundreds of thousands, or hundreds and thousands of parking stalls that would have been required but otherwise aren't being built. It will result in long-term shorter automobile trips and reduced carbon emissions. And then ultimately, just a more vibrant urban environment that supports multiple modes of transportation, trying to make it so we're not focused on, you have to get in your car, you have to drive, you have to park right in front, helping to support other modes of transportation. We did quite a bit of an extensive outreach process that was, I would say, well beyond a typical text amendment. And Tom, as Paul mentioned, Councilman Beckyus was a huge, huge part of this effort. We gave presentations to interested stakeholder groups. Here are a few listed that we talked with. Mayor's Neighborhood Roundtable, Mayor's Resilient Lincoln Roundtable, Citizens Climate Lobby, Realtors Association of Lincoln, Leba, and then the Chamber of Commerce. And all of those meetings had an overall positive response. We also have an email list of all the neighborhood representatives and then all of the developers we work with. This was sent out to all of them for comments, again, positive response. And then we did have the Planning Commission hearing a couple weeks ago, on January 17. So, just a few things to wrap up. This proposal covers about 95% of Lincoln's commercial and industrial acreage. So, it is, when we say it's almost all of our commercial and industrial land, that's what we mean. It's a huge chunk. This proposal allows the private sector to be in control of parking on their own property. Modernizing parking will allow for lower costs for developers, owners, tenants, and businesses. And then finally, the added efficiencies of city infrastructure, not having to build infrastructure across these huge parking lots. It provides opportunities to invest in further growth.
Thank you for your time. Are there any questions at this point?
Beautiful. Thank you guys very much for coming down and giving this presentation. Andrew and Paul are the pros and the crafters of the 32 pages of updates that you have in our packet here today. These guys are the pros when it comes to city ordinance updates. So, they are the people to ask questions to. What questions do we have for these guys? Yes, Councilman.
Thanks, Tom. I probably could have asked you the same question, but how does this impact handicap parking?
Do you want to take that one?
Yeah, so there is the opportunity for on-street ADA-accessible stalls, and that's something the city does install when needed. So, with any major redevelopment project, there's usually curb reconstruction, and that can include some on-street ADA stalls. There's also the opportunity for folks to request an ADA stall if they think one is needed. What happens is someone can request that to LTU. LTU does an analysis of the area to see where the closest accessible stalls are. If there isn't any in that area, they can reconstruct one.
Okay, you talked about streets, but what about off-street parking?
Yeah, so per ADA, it's essentially a function of the number of total stalls. So, if you have just one stall, that stall has to be accessible. It doesn't have to be signed, but it has to be accessible via van. And then as you build more and more stalls, overall, you need to add more accessible stalls.
Very good.
Other questions? Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilman Duden. That was a really good question. And I'm just sort of curious, because there was a business here that had requested an ADA stall. Not possible after LTU looked at it. And I'm not trying to look for the last. I'm gonna give this. I do have a question, though, about the statement that you were gonna maintain the parking in residential neighborhoods. Geographically associated with residential. But then I see the RT district is also going to be part of this package. Could you give me of an area where the commercial district near residential that will still have to abide by?
So, the parking requirements will remain for B1, B3, and O2, as well as all of the R districts. So, if we look at some of the older-built commercial areas, I would say such as College View, maybe parts of Havelock that are kind of adjacent or even within the neighborhoods, that it's definitely a balance that we want those business areas to be successful and not to, you know, sit dormant and vacant. But with this package, we didn't necessarily want to look at how that will be managed in the zoning code going forward. We felt that a lot of these other districts that are more removed, mostly from the residential areas in the community, you know, that impact would be much less. And so, I think if, in the future, we're interested in that, that's gonna take a different approach, that we're gonna have to look at, you know, further analysis. I would say it's gonna be more of a challenge to strike that balance. But this package that we're bringing forward, we felt, didn't have that associated.
Earlier in this agenda, we ran out of the area.
Yeah.
R3, change of zone to O3, and should that happen, the parking minimums would...
Correct.
Yeah, and I'll just add on with RT. One of the differences from RT and our other neighborhood commercial centers is that you do have to get a use permit to develop an RT. So, that's essentially another check where there is site plan review. And if someone is providing no parking and it's clear they're gonna need parking, there is still that level of review.
Councilman.
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gentlemen, thanks for coming forward. You touched on something, and I want to go back and talk about it again. This change is basically from now going forward. And the people I talk about in the community, the residents I get to speak with, they say, "Great, are you gonna get rid of that big parking lot named location?" How would that happen? I think there's a redevelopment portion of the program. Would you go to that again, if you would?
Well, I think if the change goes forward as is and it's adopted, then as of the effective date of the ordinance, that would be when the parking requirements would not apply. At that point, you know, depending on the district it's in, let's say it's a B5, large regional shopping center with a big empty parking lot.
Right.
That's a use permit district that would require a review process by planning to add more buildings to the site, but parking would not be reviewed per that planning application process.
So, if someone came in with a redevelopment idea, they wanted to change the way that B zoning looked, then we, there would see a chance for the parking to be reduced? Possibly.
Depending on the district, yes. If it's one of the districts included in the proposal, then it wouldn't have required parking per the city's ordinance. Yeah.
Thank you. That helps. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Okay, very good. Thank you, guys, for coming down. We appreciate it very much. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on item 5D? Please come on forward. We have two, we have two microphones here. So, we'll have our first testifier go to one, and then our second testifier go to the next. And we'll just go back and forth. Hello, welcome.
Hi, my name is Mammon Kreshi, AD40. I have to go drive. I've been here numerous times. One thing I want to say is, number one, as you know, 23% of downtown Lincoln is parking lots. You widen that boundary, look at other areas such as Gateway Mall. You keep going down past the Union Park Plaza. See all of those empty parking lots off of the, like, near Antelope Valley Parkway? Keep going down, just empty parking lots. Parking lots, yeah, they might hold cars, but the material they use only adds onto the climate change, the concrete, it burns up really badly. I mean, cities like Phoenix and Las Vegas, look at what's happened with them and their concrete. It's, the temperatures are increased dramatically because of the amount of concrete used. And while that significant impact might not happen to Lincoln, there's still a significant, there still might be a small impact that still affects the city in one way. Other, not only climate change, but also the use of it, as you said in your proposal and when you were talking about it, it's, during 2020, people used online shopping during the pandemic. And people still use it now. Online shopping is a regular thing. Myself and my mother, we use online shopping all the time. Near the Walmart in Andamat Drive, all the time, even though it's right there, we use online shopping. Parking lots continue to be underused day by day as people resort to other alternatives such as online shopping. But also, people want more public spaces as well and redevelopment on these lots because they're using online spaces, online shopping now. That's only one of the positives that might come out of the parking requirements. Not only that, it's that the parking lots, they just, they just aren't aesthetically pleasing. I mean, a lot of them don't even have landscape lots. Plus, most of the time, they ruin the entire plan of a specific area. As an example, Standing Bar High School I go to. They're quote-unquote "the most climate-friendly school out of all of LPS's schools." And that might be true, but when you put it up to the charts, you can look at the factors it has. As an example, what happens when there's 1,000 kids that are going there? There's not enough adequate parking instead of having it be more connected towards a neighborhood. Not only that, when you have a parking lot, you're giving the mentality that somebody has to drive a car. And when you give them that mentality, it causes a lot of negatives. When we moved to Lincoln, we had to buy our sister another car because you have to drive in Lincoln, and I'm gonna have to get a license and get another car as well because the area is made for driving, because you can only park. There's no sidewalks going into these businesses. As an example, I want to go to Gateway. There's not even a sidewalk to walk into the Gateway lot. You just have to cross an entire parking lot where cars sometimes are going quite fast. Same with any other business anywhere outside of downtown. They're all stopped by a giant parking lot that you have to walk through and makes you feel like you shouldn't be there. So, when you are able to look at the issue with parking lots and say, "How can you lessen it?" You don't have to remove it. You're not gonna remove parking lots in Lincoln. It's always gonna be a car-oriented city with its location. It's far away from other cities like Kansas City or even cities like Vegas and stuff. It's not as big as LA. But you can lessen it, though, and have redevelopment occur. As an example, in North Platte with their mall, I forgot what it's called, but they redeveloped most of their lot, and they still kept parking. They kept the same amount of parking they removed, except they just converted it into garages and on-street parking. Plus, while they did that, they brought more businesses and more residential units there. Same in Buffalo. When Buffalo tore down their highway, they redeveloped it with new apartments. But with the lessened parking requirements, they were able to have less parking but more commercial and residential space. And what happened when they built those? The economy grew because there was more businesses. A lot of these parking lots are free. Or even if you have to pay them, a lot of the times when they're underused, they're just not gonna bring benefit to the city. When you have something like apartment complexes on there that have commercial space, you have those people who live on top of it to be able to go downstairs and use that commercial space and people coming in as well. I forget what the project is called, but it's near the Capitol. It's, there's a few shops, there's a bubble tea shop. We drive there, and we're all the way in the suburbs. But there's also residential on top. So, people can just walk downstairs once in a morning every weekend, get a nice seat. And that's already bringing that business and the city in profit from one group of people upstairs. And then you take into account people coming in from the suburbs, like myself and others, that's gonna be bringing in double the profit compared to, imagine that was an empty parking lot. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Councilors, any questions for our testifier? Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm a little confused. You are supportive or opposed?
Supportive.
So, I want to make sure I was clear.
All right, very good. Thank you so much. We can take our next testifier up here after we hear from Katie. Katie, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon, city council members. My name is Katie Bulmire, 1128 Lincoln Mall, and I am from the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank the Planning Commission and Councilman Beckyus for bringing this forward. Councilman Beckyus had the hard task of talking in front of our leadership, not once, but twice. And so, I appreciate him coming back for a second time for more. We are very glad to support this proposal. Removing the minimum parking requirements will allow businesses to allocate resources more efficiently. This will lead to development of new businesses and the expansion of existing ones, contributing to economic growth. Businesses can tailor their development to the specific need of their customers and communities without being constrained by rigid parking requirements. This flexibility can lead to more customized and context-sensitive solutions. Minimum parking requirements can increase development costs, which may be passed on to consumers. By eliminating such requirements, businesses can potentially reduce costs and make services more affordable for the community. Eliminating these parking requirements may incentivize developers to consider underutilized or vacant sites that may have been overlooked due to stringent parking regulations. This can contribute to the revitalization of neglected area. And because of these issues, we are very proud to support this measure, and we encourage you to vote yes.
Very good. Thank you, Katie. Any questions? All right, very good. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Hello, welcome, Adam.
Good afternoon, councilors. Adam Hints, 1919 Prospect Street, speaking on behalf of Friends of Wilderness Park, local community organization dedicated to protection and celebration of wilderness park. In this capacity, we are in support of this text amendment. I would like to thank Paul and Andrew for their very hard work getting this together. And then thanks to the Chair, Tom Beckyus, for his support too, pushing this through. So, it's kind of an interesting place where climate and environment and development, the Venn diagram kind of is laying on top of each other, right? And so, definitely a win-win in doing this. Obviously, we'll see how it pans out up, you know, as was said, in other cities. It has worked out for them. Fayetteville is kind of famous for being a very intelligent city. So, hopefully, we'll get the same results they did. Big thing for us was the urban sprawl part. I don't think urban sprawl is really said enough. It's kind of the Voldemort of planning, kind of. People don't like to talk about it. But it is, it is a consequence of doing business, right? But I think minimizing and slowing it down is tantamount in terms of responsibility for developers and for planners. And we appreciate it whenever we can slow that down. And I think this is a great example of where our communities can come together and agree on something. And I would be so interested and would, you know, promote or encourage any type of, you know, movement towards where that Venn diagram is laying on top of each other. We're more than happy to speak with developers and the development community. I was happy Katie was here and able to speak on behalf of the chamber. And then the very articulate young man, I've seen him come before you so many times, and I'm glad that he was able to give his voice. There's just so much that's going very well. And I'm sorry if I've been taking up too much time. I just, I think this moment is really important because that Venn diagram is important. Conservation design, you know, with less pressure on the requirements of parking, wouldn't it be great if we actually tore some concrete out and, you know, reduce that heat island? You know, putting in some oaks, or actually, a grouping of oaks, maybe, creating more biodiversity in our urban landscapes. The climate action goals being addressed through this by, you know, looking at the comp plan, again, seeing where these win-wins are moving forward. It would just be great to work towards more of these types of actions. And I don't see where we would, where there would be any... Let's see, what's the word? I'll use it later, I guess. I don't know. Besides that, I guess I really have nothing else to do. Besides that, I guess I really have nothing else to do. I'm just very grateful that this moment is happening, even in short measure, you know, it's kind of win by 1,000 victories, right? And so we need to, we need to keep that type of pressure and that momentum forward, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Adam. Any questions for our testifier? Okay, thank you so much. Travis, welcome.
Hey, guys. I'm Travis Folling. I'm the new executive director for Leva. So this is going to sound like I copied Katie's homework here, but Leva supports the Lincoln-Lancaster Planning Commission and City Councilman Beckius's proposal to modernize Lincoln's commercial parking regulations by rolling back minimum parking requirements in the city's commercial districts. With the increasing trend of online shopping, the demand for expansive parking lots and parking stalls has significantly reduced, leaving predominantly unoccupied spaces. The area consumed with these expansive, underutilized, commercial parking lots could be repurposed to support a variety of businesses such as retail stores and restaurants, thus enhancing economic density. The same space could potentially be rezoned to accommodate residential properties, paving the way for more housing developments. Lincoln will become a denser, more economically efficient city when the same amount of space generates additional economic activity. Eliminating commercial parking minimums helps business developers by decreasing the land they need for their business, thus reducing the cost of development and instead allowing the market to make the determination. Introducing a larger business shouldn't mean sacrificing real estate for a host of other enterprises, and smaller businesses shouldn't be forced to bear the cost of providing more spaces when it's not necessary. Repealing the parking regulations removes the needless delays in development and eliminating the cumbersome appeal process that holds up business and developers for months. This change will expedite the development of Lincoln's commercial expansion and allow for more development onward from this time. More dense business development, projects completed faster, and applied development to our city as it expands outward are good reasons for this change. This is an excellent proposal, and Leva fully supports it.
Thank you, Travis, for coming down. We appreciate it. Questions for our testifier? Okay, see none. Thank you so much. Monty, welcome.
Hello, Monty Frelick, 129 North 10th Street. I'm the president of US Property. We're a commercial property development company and been actively developing commercial property for a little over 30 years. I really think this is a step in the right direction. Every commercial development is unique in some way, shape, or form, and there is a financial incentive for every developer to get the parking right. So I really commend Councilman Beckius and the leadership of Lincoln for taking this step. I think it's a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Questions for our testifier? Okay, see none?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item 5D? Anyone else here for item 5D? Counselors, do we have any questions for staff? Yes, councilwoman, please. Paul and Andrew?
Yeah, either one.
We'll take them both.
It's a simple question, but I think it came up when Mr. Kareshi was speaking. Is there any evidence that the reduction of parking increases transit use?
I would think that it's kind of a chicken-and-egg thing of sorts, because we have in Lincoln talked a lot about nodes and corridors. Those are terms that we throw out a lot. I think about the current comprehensive plan that focuses on O Street being a transit-focused corridor. I think before, again, it's one or the other, what happens first? We need to have a certain level of density or commercial floor area to support investment in transit, but are you going to have the transit investment before the floor area increase? I think it's part of the equation. I don't, I can't cite a specific study offhand, but I think it's part of our equation and our step towards looking at that further.
All right, yeah. I was just curious, in your review of other communities, if they have seen an increase?
I think transit is a common amenity in the other cities we looked at.
Okay.
I don't know their usage and how that increased or was affected.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Okay, see none. Thank you both. We surely appreciate it. I just want to take a quick moment to say, once again, I thank you to Andrew and Paul for their work on this proposal. This proposal will make Lincoln the first community in Nebraska to remove commercial parking minimums and will be the largest change in Lincoln's parking code since its inception. I am hopeful these changes will reduce development costs while also addressing environmental impact. Thank you all who came down and testified. We appreciate it very much. Let's go ahead and move on, Madam Clerk, to Section 6.
Section 6 is our ordinance's third reading and related resolutions. Item 6A is change of zone 23073, application of Southminster Church to change the zone from R4 Residential District to R4 Residential District with landmark overlay on property generally located at 2915 South 16th Street. Introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second. Second. Carlson, discussion.
I'll just take a quick moment to thank the developers of this project. This is a unique project, a unique existing property, and I think that your creative uses are, once again, coming out fully, and we appreciate you taking this building and continuing its life into its next iteration. So thank you, John. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 6B is appealed by Jeremy Smith of Planning Commission, approval of special permit 23046 to allow for residential and office uses in the Southminster Church on property generally located at 2915 South 16th Street. Introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, discussion. See none, please call a roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 6C is approving the 23rd Street Net Zero Live Work Redevelopment Project Agreement between the City, 23 NZLW LLC, and QJ Rentals LLC relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at 335 North 23rd Street. Introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, discussion.
I think this is a really exciting project, and I look forward to seeing one more housing type show up, and I love those microspaces.
Other comments? All right, see none, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 6D is admitting the fiscal year 2324 CIP to authorize and appropriate $500, $2,810 in tax increment financing for the 23rd Street Net Zero Live Work Redevelopment Project. Introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, discussion. See none, please call a roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 6E is authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the 23rd Street Net Zero Live Work Redevelopment Project in an amount not to exceed $502,810. Introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, discussion. See none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 6F is approving the real estate purchase agreement between the City of Lincoln and REV Development for the sale of city-owned property generally located at 1005O Street. Introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to offer a motion to amend to this item.
Oh, very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to say that this is, the amendment would correct some numbers, some amounts, some dollar amounts due at closing time that were incorrectly stated in the original resolution.
All right, very good. Any questions? Okay, see none, let's go ahead and vote on the motion to amend as introduced by Councilman Shob.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0.
And on to the main motion.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 6G is approving the real estate purchase agreement between the City of Lincoln and, oh, excuse me, items, I read the wrong one. 6G is approving the amendment of the purchase agreement between the City of Lincoln and the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, to extend the closing date for the property generally located at 1005O Street. Introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, discussion. See none, please call a roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Okay, that concludes Section 6 of our agenda.